Good afternoon, everybody. Called this meeting to order. And first thing on the agenda is something near and dear to my heart. It is proclamation for National Bike Month and Bike to Work Week. We have some special guests here. Mike Mattel and Dick Kuschwa. Come on up, fellas. And if you don't mind, I'm going to read this because that's the whole fun of it. This is a proclamation for National Bike Month, May of 2013, and Bike to Work Week, May 13 through 17, 2013. And it would be such a better Bike to Work Week if it wasn't raining all week. I can tell you that much right now. So, whereas millions of Americans engage in cycling because it is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, as well as an excellent form of physical fitness, and whereas National Bike Month and Bike to Work Week help to increase public awareness for bicycling, educate the community about the benefits of bicycling for transportation purposes, and encourage people to try to bicycle commuting. And whereas there is a need to promote alternative forms of transportation such as walking and biking in order to reduce pollution, reduce America's dependence on fossil fuels, and improve the health and well-being of all people. And whereas the increasing, the number of bicycle lanes, paths, storage facilities, traffic calming measures will help the city ease automobile traffic congestion and encourage a healthy lifestyle for residents. Now therefore, the city of Hagerstown proclaims the month of May as National Bike Month and May 13 through 17, 2013, as Bike to Work Week, and encourages all citizens to participate in the city's bicycle events in May to help raise awareness and promote bicycle riding in our community. The city of Hagerstown encourages citizens to recognize the importance of sharing our streets with cyclists, encourages citizens to utilize the city's bike routes, and urges those in the community to participate in cycling activities to whatever extent possible during this month and all months, including cycling to work. So, fellas, I'm going to present this to you. Mr. Hub City Cycle.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Longtime Bicycle Rider and Pioneer. Congratulations. Everybody get out and take a bike ride. There's a Beatles song about that, right?
Ride a bike.
Take a bike ride, sir.
How are you?
Yeah. No.
No, I don't.
That's paperback writer, never mind. That's an old joke.
Do you want to cover some of the events next?
Oh, yes. Please, everybody join me and Mike, and I'm sure Dick will be there. This Saturday is Bike with the Mayor. We're going to start at Fairgrounds Park at 9:00 a.m. We're going to do the whole Hub City Bike Loop, which is what, about 10 miles?
About 10 miles.
It's easy. Easy 10 miles.
A nice, easy pace. It'll be a lot of fun. We've been doing the bike rides, kind of getting them going on here for the past month, up from the store. But, like, nobody can hear me?
We want to make sure the people at home can hear you.
All you viewers. Is it on? Okay. We start at 9 o'clock, and we do these rides, and we do the city loop, which is a 10-mile loop that's marked all the way around the city of Hagerstown, which is absolutely wonderful. So you need to come out and join us, and you definitely need to come out and join us this Saturday because you've got to ride with the mayor, which is awesome.
You'll see me out and about on my bike throughout the spring and summer.
We're very appreciative.
And you guys are out there every Saturday, right?
Yes. Every Saturday, 9:00, we leave from the store, but this Saturday we'll be leaving from Fairgrounds.
And tell everybody where your store is located.
Store's located up on the corner of Franklin and Prospect Street. It's Hub City Cycles.
Thank you so much for all you do. And Mr. Kuschwa, you have any words?
Yeah, I've been in the bike game since the early 80s, and we were pretty lonely back then. And one of the things that's helped bring biking to the forefront has been the participation of the city with all the bike races you've supported over the years. The Tour de Comte in the early 90s was here twice, the biggest pro race in the country. And now we're moving on with the bike lanes. And five years ago, if you'd have told me we're going to be where we are today, I couldn't imagine it in my wildest dreams. So thanks to the council and the mayor and the staff, Rodney Tisho and Alex, for their great support.
Well, you got it right. The staff have worked really hard on this as an initiative over the years, and thank you for all your efforts. Hagerstown has a long, rich bicycling history, so we just want to make it safer and easier for people. So thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you very much.
All right. No problem. Although we like rain, it sure would be nice to have some nice spring days to ride a bike. Next thing on the agenda is city code revisions for dumpsters and portable storage containers. We have our planning director and one of our inspectors, Mr. Falk. Welcome to the table.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Kathy.
You're used to seeing me, but we have today, I think you haven't met him yet, is Paul Falk, the inspections manager in our division, planning and code administration.
Hello.
Hello. And we've brought before you what we think are some pretty straightforward code amendments to give the code administration staff better tools to deal with some nuisance complaints that we get on a somewhat regular basis involving roll-off trash enclosures in residential properties and portable storage containers used as sheds on residential properties. And if you want us to run through exactly what's being done, it's minor tweaks to Chapter 117, which is the refuse to recycling chapter. It's repealing 184, which is the property maintenance chapter, and replacing it with a portable storage container chapter. Property maintenance chapter is redundant to two other chapters of the city code. The only part of it that we use is the part dealing with portable storage containers, and so we're going to have this just be a portable storage container chapter and make some tweaks. I don't know if you want to go over any additional information. We have some photos to give you a sense of the kinds of complaints that we get. About four.
I can run through some of the photos here, see and kind of see what some of the ordinance is going to address. Essentially, this is a residential neighborhood. We have a storage container in the rear of the property. That's one of the smaller containers that is available for rent. On this property, we actually have is in another residential neighborhood where it not only has a storage container, but also a roll-off trash container. Here's in the rear of residential neighborhood as well, where we have a roll-off trash container that is full of debris. Another roll-off trash container, and this is just real quick, when I asked inspectors where to kind of identify some, so they were able to rattle off some addresses relatively quickly. And then we have another roll-off trash container in a residential neighborhood as well. So the goal is to address this blight that it's causing to the neighboring properties so that we can have some tool to use so we can end this blight for the neighbors and citizens to look out at.
What we're proposing is that we would have the ordinance introduced at the end of this month, adopted at the end of June, and it would become effective 30 days later.
I would imagine, you know, this is an issue not if people have a permit and they're doing construction. I mean, obviously, people are allowed to have a roll-off container to be able to deal with all the debris or...
Right. Correct. There is a section where that does allow for you're doing any type of structural work.
Temporary, on a temporary basis.
As long as you have an active permit with us.
What's the usual term of a, like, what is temporary? How long is that?
And here we're saying 30 days or allowed during any period of construction at the subject property for as long as a valid construction permit is in effect. It's the long-term use that we're trying to be able to address.
But to be clear, Kathy, does somebody have to have a permit to get the dumpster, the roll-off container?
Yes.
Or can you have it up to 30 days without a construction permit?
Correct. After 30 days.
The 30 days one, you don't need for a construction permit. That's if you're clearing out your house.
If you are doing cleanup in your yard or in your house that didn't require a permit, you could have a roll-off container for up to 30 days.
Yeah, it's anticipate the construction period would probably be longer than 30 days. But as long as you have a valid construction permit open, that that would be acceptable
Any council questions, Mr. Munson?
If someone chooses to put one of these in his or her yard and it doesn't comply with the rules, when does the fine, the penalty is a fine, right? When does it begin?
Generally, we would make notice to the person at the property, whether or not it was stopping at the residence, or if we could make contact, send them a letter indicating that they're in violation of the ordinance, that they would have 30 days to rectify it. And after the 30 days, we would have to choose some sort of enforcement.
Okay. Mr. Harf, I could admit, Paul, it's nice to see you in person. We talk by phone a lot, and so it's good to see you in person.
Yes, nice to see you, too.
Thank you.
And as far as chapter, the new 184 with portable storage containers, the same kind of concept, you're allowed to have them on a limited temporary basis, but if they're there for six months, truly, you're only going to know that...
Just commercial and industrial properties for this one.
I'm sorry?
This would only allow them in commercial and industrial districts.
And the, I would imagine, you're really only going to know if they're there for longer than six months because neighbors would keep seeing them out there, and so they would naturally call you, and that's why you would go enforce the code at that point.
Right. And generally, we start the clock at the time where it notified. We don't go back to whenever. It's only when we can verify the actual date that it was there, so we start the clock at that time.
Thank you for explaining that.
You emphasize steel and metal in the definition. Aren't there fiberglass containers?
Not that aware of the fiberglass ones. Generally, the ones that we see in the areas.
They're all steel? Why define that? Why not define it by size or the container used as waste rather than, I mean, I think, I've seen crazy, heard of crazy things in court where things get thrown out on technicalities like that. Why define it as metal or steel rather than just by its use and size?
Something we can look into that traditionally, once we've come across, have been steel. Lot of definitions that have been used for steel. Previous definition had steel in it.
It does say usually metal or metal framed.
It does say portable storage containers include any type of prefabricated container, so it wouldn't be restricted to the first sentence.
Well, under dumpster in Section 1, I see large steel waste receptacle. I see, or other large metal container, you know. So I see two, metal being used twice as an adjective there under, and...
Okay. I was looking at the other ordinance.
Well...
Okay.
That's in what's being proposed, is it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We have two ordinances in front of you. I was looking at the other one. I didn't realize you were talking about the dumpsters. We can make that less specific about material.
Yeah, I just think it's, you know, make it as general as possible, that's all.
Any other questions or comments about this proposal?
If it's okay with mayor and council, we put it on, for introduction, on May 21st for both ordinances. Adoption then in June.
And both of them, there was a typo in here. Both of them would have, the fine would be up to $500. One is 500 and one is 200 in the packet, but they would match.
Thank you. Good work.
So when this...
This has been an issue.
When this goes into effect, those that you provide in pictures will be required to be vacated.
We'll make notice to them to come up with alternative means to store their stuff or to remove their trash receptacles.
I know this has been an issue in several neighborhoods as you illustrated with your presentation, so thank you for your work on this.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Karen Paulson and Kevin De Haven from Human Resources on the workers'
Mayor and council, good evening.
Hi, Karen.
Good evening.
Hi, Kevin.
Okay, well, we went out for proposals, and we had five come back. It was pretty close, but we felt that CBIZ came back with the best scope of services overall, and a committee of five selected them primarily for their marketing services.
And when the, you say the low bidder did not fully meet the scope of services. Can you explain that?
They didn't address loss control services. And ever since I took over half of the liability insurance, I get out in the field less, I get to do less training, so we're looking to supplement as much as we can.
Can you explain what a loss control services for those of us who don't understand that?
It provides safety. They could come in and do site visits, actually supplement some of our training, whether it's for field staff or for office staff.
But I would say it's a little disconcerting to me for a couple of reasons. One, the bidder that doesn't qualify is the same person who's held our contract for as long as I can remember, and is the low bidder on top of it. The other thing that's disconcerting is my recollection, and if I'm wrong, maybe we can get some facts and look at them, is that one of the reasons for the increases we've seen is mainly related to fire and police, and they are mainly related to the presumption of heart disease being a compensable injury. If I'm wrong, then, you know, I would like to see that. I, that's a concern. Without further, I would be inclined to want to continue with who has our contract now.
Mr. Munson, could you tell me what the term "scope of services" means in terms of workers' compensation?
In the RFP, we ask for a scope of services that had to do with a broad appeal to marketing. So when we're asking each bidder to come back and explain how they market our account, one of the things that we're looking for is specifics on how they deal with municipalities and going to insurance companies, workers' comp insurance companies, and selling us as a product. We have probably over the last 11 years that I've been here, been out to bid for workers' comp services five, six times, and we haven't come close except for two years ago.
Have we come close to what?
Come to close to moving away from IWh. We had Selective put in a proposal two years ago that was approximately $80,000 off of what IWh had offered, and that included the cost of broker services. We also put in the scope of services specific to the loss control services. That's one of the biggest items we were looking for at that time. We want somebody to come in and supplement the training that we're doing, be able to do site visits, help me in determining where we should focus a little bit more on some of those costs.
I don't know a whole lot about workers' compensation, but I'm under the impression that there's a very limited market out there for workers' compensation, probably only four or five, maybe six companies. I mean, I don't understand how one company can market it any better over another company if there are so few companies that provide workers' compensation services.
Well, one such way is if you're a brokerage firm and you have, let's say, Selective or Hartford, and you have a number of accounts with Hartford, then if you have five accounts going in, you're adding that sixth account, then it could give you discounts that's not available to a broker that may have one account with that insurance company. That's one such way. The other item is if you move away from IWh, what they do is they have rates for police, fire, they group all the public works, water and sewer into one group, and a clerical rate. If we went to a different insurance company, they use what's called NCCI rates, and they would break the rates out to different job classes. So your police, your fire would stay in the same rates, but a water service personnel would not be in the same rate as somebody from sewer or one of our public works employees. And that could decrease the rates that you're seeing on some of the job classes that we're seeing now. So what insurance companies do is they take every $100 a payroll, multiply it times the rate, and divide it or multiply it by your experience mod. So right now, we're at .92 with our experience mod, and we get a little discount on that. If we go above one, then we start getting charged extra money on it. So from that standpoint, a broker who is well-versed and diversified in their workers' comp carriers could possibly save us money in the long run.
You said possibly, potentially, but we don't know. We don't know.
Correct. It's not a guarantee.
So we're taking a local, well-established company we've dealt business with, and we're throwing it out, but we don't know what the potential really is out there. I mean, can you cite other municipalities that are getting better rates? Are we, I mean, what is the judgment that we're going to do better that says, let's switch after all this time?
I did a cross-section with area municipalities, counties. I talked to the city of Frederick, Frederick County, Howard County, the list goes on. Not everybody was with IWh. They were with a lot of different insurance companies. They may not have had the same exposures with public safety, but some of them actually did, and that's what we're hoping for. We're hoping for, and this goes back to Councilmember Metzer's comments, we're hoping, because IWh is not a strong participant when it comes to taking claims beyond the Workers' Comp Commission. So when an employee gets to the point where they feel that they have to get attorney representation and they're settling out a claim, IWh would rather settle the claim, whether it's a valid claim or not, and not have their name attached to a lawsuit that goes beyond and goes to local courts. A company like Selective, Hartford, those type of companies, their attorneys are a little bit more judicious in how they look at claims, and that's the other thing that we're looking to do, is we're trying to control our costs that keep expanding each year from litigation and hoping that we can get better services from the workers' comp carrier.
This would be a five-year contract?
Yes.
This is the first time we've ever had a five-year contract?
Yes. Yes, it is.
What have previous contracts been? How many years?
We didn't have a contract with the current broker. We just renewed with them. Anytime I took a request, request for proposal out, it went directly to the broker, and then we would put out the RFP and open it up to other brokers to bid on. And then, in most cases, I would have to go out and sign a brokerage letter to those brokers to a specific insurance company. As a matter of fact, two years ago, I had to take each broker that responded, which was right around 11, and submit paperwork back to their insurance company of choice and give them a broker letter. So we ended up doing a selection process where we took not just the first come, first choice, but their preference of selection. So if a broker came back and said, I want Selective, Hartford, and IWh, well, Selective was their first choice, and if somebody had Selective as their second, they still would have got Selective. So we did our best to equalize to all the brokers. In this case, we felt that we would go out for broker services to try, and this came from suggestion from other brokers as a fair choice, but we felt that if we go out and just did it specific to brokers, that this would change and allow a broker that has more accounts with a larger insurance company to come in and be a player for us.
Who was the committee?
Karen, myself, Michelle Berger. We had Susan Delauter, and we had, let's see, Becky McGinnis from the county.
The one thing that occurs to me in this issue is that, as Lou said, the company that's had it, has had it for a long, long time. I don't know how many years, 15, 18 years or something. Is that right?
Yes.
And that company is the low bidder. Has I read this? They also happen to be the ones that employ the people that work in this community, not CBIZ. And I sort of have the same problem under those circumstances that Councilman Metzner
Any other comments or questions? Marty? Kristen? Penny?
Well, you know, I'm not ready to approve this yet. I'm going to have to look at it some more, but I think that, I still don't understand the superiority of the second highest bidder over the low bidder. So I guess this is on, this would be for approval at the end of the month? Is that, when we'd be approving this, or are we doing a consensus today? Because I'm not ready to approve it.
I think, I don't know what the plan is in terms of the speed of which the ordinance needs to take effect. When is the current contract, or you said there is no contract?
There is no current contract.
So we don't have a deadline or anything to meet?
I'm looking at May 21st.
Okay.
The budget deadline.
I guess one clarifying question is, was the intent to obtain loss control services clear in the RFP? I guess that's my question.
Yes, I can provide that to everyone.
Okay. So I guess, you know, with the provision of that information, you can always come back next week, perhaps, put it on the agenda and discuss it further. You said that Ms. McGinnis from the county was participated in the process.
Yes.
For, was that for county participation?
No, no. Strictly from her position, Becky is the loss control coordinator for the county.
So what does the county do?
They're self-insured.
Okay. I mean, I think this gets to my bigger question, and I'm not going to debate the merits of the difference of $1,000 between brokers, but I think for me, the bigger question is, what do the other local governmental jurisdictions that have to provide this same type of mechanism as part of their governmental operations do, you know, among their respective parties? And it gets back to that bigger question that I have is, why don't we do these things under one sort of umbrella?
You mean broker services?
For workers' comp. And the county does its own thing. We're here doing our own thing. I'm assuming the Board of Ed's out doing its own thing. The college is doing its own thing. I just look at some of these things and they're, you know...
Well, since the county is self-insured, we couldn't be a rider onto any of their policy. We're not, workers' comp is based on pay, so, you know, we're not, we're not a functioning entity of the county.
Why can't jurisdiction itself perform those services?
And, I don't know.
Well, it's broker services. It's not providing the actual insurance, right? Why can't you all do that?
There's a level of expertise that brokers have that we just don't. And that comes down to the marketing.
Okay. Well, I guess I just need to be convinced that why the level of expertise to go to an outside vendor that's a higher bidder is, you know, can provide that extra level of expertise. I haven't seen it yet.
Okay. Well, we'll have staff get more information to the council, and we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
Sure.
I have one other thing. I don't know how, if you could put this together or not, but I think it would be interesting if we could see a chart or something of each agency and how that particular... if we could see a chart or something of each agency, and how that particular agency is impacted by this. How many people from different agencies are on workers' comp, or it used to be with the agencies are getting workers' comp, and so on.
When you say agency, are you talking about?
I'm talking about the different departments in the city of Hagerstown. That's what I meant.
Okay.
He's an old state guy, you know.
And I'm aware that because of changes, fairly recent changes, I think, in the workers' compensation law, and I believe Lou might have mentioned this, that some diseases that would probably not have in the past been included in workers' compensation are now included. And I was just wondering if we could get, get the number of those in the different departments as well.
The number of claims and the number of presumptive is what you're asking for?
I guess what I'm saying is, I'm sure a lot of this workers' compensation stuff is work-related. Somebody falls, breaks a hip, but some of it may be, well, as a result of heart trouble or something. I mean, I don't know exactly. As I said, I don't know a whole lot about workers' compensation.
Presumption claims, which would be heart, lung.
Lung, yeah.
Heart, lung.
Will only apply to.
Cancer, maybe.
Yes, certain cancers. Only apply to your public safety. That would be police and fire. A public works or water sewer employee could not file a claim for presumption.
So, if we could get a chart that shows us the breakdown of various departments, I think that would be helpful to us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for this issue for staff? All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is about investment incentives, and I guess I'd like to preface this agenda item by saying that there are plenty of opportunities for investment in Hagerstown, and we welcome anybody who wants to invest, thank you, in our, in our city. The city cannot do it alone, and so we seek public-private partnerships, or rather, private-public partnerships, to make these kinds of things happen. And I think, I know, the staff has been working on ways to enhance the incentives that we have, and to come up with new ideas for how we can attract investment to Hagerstown. So, I'm going to hand it over to Andrew Sargent, our Downtown Manager, John Kearns, our Community Development Manager, and John Lestition, our Director of Community Economic Development.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We're here, as you can see on the handout, we're here to discuss Invest Hagerstown and two proposed initiatives. The two proposed initiatives that you'll see in the handout, they are action-oriented, and they're designed to result in multiple bricks and mortar projects that would result in significant upgrade, significant upgrade to our building stock throughout the city of Hagerstown. These initiatives would utilize public funding through the city of Hagerstown, and this funding would be leveraged with private investment and private funds. Today, one other thing you'll notice in the handout, we're looking for a nod from the Mayor and Council to just approve these concepts. They're not formalized, or guidelines are not formalized and finished at this point. So, today, we're just looking for a nod on the basic concepts of Invest Hagerstown and the two proposed initiatives. The handout you'll also see provides a list of some of the current programs and incentives that the city of Hagerstown offers. These are incentives and programs that can be taken advantage of by homeowners, businesses, and developers, and these incentives, I think, demonstrate the city of Hagerstown's experience and city of Hagerstown's staff's experience in carrying out successful programs and projects for businesses, homeowners, and developers.
When we start looking at new initiatives and adding them to a list of initiatives that we already have a lot of experience in implementing, we thought it would be helpful to group them under a platform called Invest Hagerstown, in this case. In this way, we can clearly communicate the city's established commitment to invest with the private sector. These two initiatives that we'd like to talk about today, they're two, they're two. The first one is, we're calling the First Third. The First Third, under the First Third, the city will partner with private developers to become the First Third of a larger investment, their investment in major renovation projects. And the two parts of that are the city center building renovation grants. These will be two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grants. The developer matches the city's grant with a five-hundred-thousand-dollar minimum investment, coming up with the name of the First Third. Likewise, like to talk about a citywide building renovation grant. It's going to be fifty-thousand-dollar grants. The developer matches with a hundred, a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars of their own investment, making us the First Third of their major renovation project.
And the second part of the two initiatives would be the neighborhood owner-occupied grants, and these would be grants available to homeowners throughout the city, no income restrictions. They would be targeting homes built before nineteen sixty. Home would have to be owner-occupied, and they would be specific preparers such as bathrooms, roofs, HVAC, that would be limited, wouldn't be available for all general home improvements. But the grants could be up to ten thousand dollars, and we would look for a twenty percent match, depending on the amount of the project cost.
And in coming up with these, these numbers, staff looked at our own experiences, and the experiences that we have heard to date from people in our community. So, when we talk about First Third, and we look at renovation projects that private industry has undertaken in our community, and that we have undertaken in the community, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar level is geared towards larger projects, and it's targeted to the issue we have, which is buildings. We have buildings that are in need of serious work. The citywide renovation aspect, again, commercial, that's some smaller projects, but again, that's citywide, and it's supporting businesses throughout the community, but again, targeting for bricks and mortar. And as John said, on the neighborhood concerns, our homes, again, the housing stock, is in need of some serious work. Building systems that John mentioned, HVAC, we have many homes that don't have central air conditioning. We have homes that their kitchens may be original from the nineteen sixties. And this investment, as John and Andrew have already said, leverages private sector development, and that helps us all with the assessable base.
I think one thing to add, the concept for First Third is, the minimum investment required by the private developer would be exclusive of acquisition cost, so that minimum match by the private developer under First Third would be bricks and mortar matching cost.
There's a lot of work to do here. We've got, we've got a lot to think about. We want to make sure that a program like this would be effective. This is not something that, to be taken lightly, obviously, and so really, we would just like to hear your thoughts, get the nod from you, and to come back, do some investigation, and come back, and see what we can, see what we can provide.
Can you kind of walk through the bottom four points?
Sure. So, these are some of the specific guidelines for the, for the proposed initiatives. We need to, we need to talk about them more, we need to develop them more. But the first priority area for the city center building renovation grants will be a one-block radius, proposed one-block radius from Public Square. And then, but we can also, we would, we would look at any, any proposals, but that would be the first priority. We would establish a review committee that would be made up of the established PEP committee. There's some serious expertise on there. And then, we would also add a representative from the Planning Commission, the Hagerstown Redevelopment Authority, and the Historic District Commission. Commercial applications will be graded and ranked and approved according to project vision, anticipated impact on sustainable job creation, and increase in tax assessments, which is a goal in the end of all this. And likewise, residential applications will be graded and ranked in much the similar, similar way. But this is a framework, and we've got to come back, we've got to put a lot of meat on the bones here, and come back with, with some very specific plans.
Well, I think what I like about this is, again, it's focused on action. It is truly seeking a multitude of private-public partnerships. It is not just giving money away. It's a guarantee, basically, by the city that if they make the investment, that we will make the match and guarantee that part of the financing. And I look at it as a way, you know, my experience on the Planning Commission for five and a half years was that the developers will only jump as far, as high as you make them jump. And so, I think our distinguished planning director said, you know, there's bottom-shelf plans, there's middle-shelf plans, and there's top-shelf plans, and they've got them all there, and, you know, they'll do whatever they need. And so, yes, we have codes that we put in place to protect public health, safety, and welfare. We have historic districts to protect the architectural integrity. And so, where we do have those codes that, in the eyes of a developer, may create a burden, we're offering something that can help them overcome that perceived burden by us raising the bar, basically, to get the kind of product, to get the kind of development and buildings that we want to see in our core, and also in our residential communities. So, I appreciate your effort on this, and I think that this really does, it's a good outline of where we need to go, so. Yes, yeah, go ahead.
The one thing I wanted to touch on is the funding. And in this document, we are proposing utilizing the one-point-five that's in the CIP budget, the proposed budget for fiscal fourteen. And so, we would also need direction from the Mayor and Council on that, in terms of your thoughts, any initial reactions in terms of directions that we should be exploring? And again, our desire would be to receive a nod tonight to flush this out and come back with a solid proposal.
So, this would be a minimum of five-hundred thousand. If it was more than that, if the maximum grant would still be two-hundred-and-fifty.
That's correct, yes.
Yes.
But if somebody wants to invest three-hundred thousand in something, they're not eligible.
The, you have the fifty-thousand-dollar grants that would be eligible for smaller projects. We are trying to target the larger projects, and I think staff's thinking is kind of along with the Mayor was saying, in terms of, we're looking for top-end plans from developers and investors, and we're looking to create that significant impact.
Would these be discretionary? In other words, we would decide whether it was valid or not? If someone wants to renovate their property on the dual highway, their drive-in restaurant, and they're going to invest a hundred thousand anyhow, it's not automatic, we'd give them a fifty-thousand-dollar grant, is it?
Correct. We would actually have the staff committee review all the applications, and Andrew, if you want to.
Sure. I mean, we, everyone would go through the process. Everyone would have to be vetted by the committee and.
So, we'd be making calls on whether, even if they met the investment threshold?
Right. We're also looking, I mean, we, we're also looking at vision. We want to, you know, we want to make sure that this is in line with our, with our comprehensive plan, with everything that we've established, so.
And if I recall, the funding source in the budget was bonds. Is that right in the CIP project?
What we're referring to is that one-point-five that was in the downtown.
Right. But the funding of that was bonds, is?
And the funding was bonds.
Okay. So, that, that could create some, some complications. That's, that needs to be discussed, bond or.
It's an eligible use, but it could be taxable.
Right.
But it's a, it's a source of funding for one-time expenditures, and.
I understand.
It's not operating revenue.
Right. But it's private use.
Look, this, this program that you've conceived does seem to give a lot of bang for the buck. If you said this, I didn't hear you do. Are there any other jurisdictions that you're aware of that have this sort of program?
None specifically that I'm aware of right now. Not, not that I am aware of currently, yeah.
So, it's kind of new, but we do a lot of new things in Washington, CA.
And I don't think we heavily researched that.
No.
We were really just trying to come up with a program to bring to Mayor and Council.
Okay. Well, let me ask this one question.
That fit our budget.
Regarding the commercial development.
Mm-hmm.
Will the people be required to own the building to get the loan?
Right now, I think our thinking is yes. Our thinking is yes.
Okay. So, if it were a company that was moving in here and willing to take a twenty-five-year lease on a building, they still wouldn't qualify?
These, but the, yes, these are the details that we need to work out.
I'm sorry, say it again.
These are definitely the details that need to be worked out. Long-term commitment, as far, in my thinking, a long-term lease is.
Those sorts of things you talked about, in terms of detail.
That's correct. But a long-term lease, I would think, you know, would be a very attractive, another reason to renovate a building. Could be owned by somebody else. But a twenty-five-year lease, that shows commitment on both the landowner, the property owner, and the, and the tenant, so.
And if I can add on that, the goal is to deal with the building issues. When we look at the core of the city, the buildings that are vacant are in really bad shape, and when we take a look at what it would take to renovate a building, to be able to attract a quality tenant, a quality business, it's going to take investment above what the numbers make sense, and that's why we're proposing a grant to change the equation on some of these projects.
And I think you bring up a superb statement when you say that, and I just wonder, first of all, I like the concept. So, as far as answering your question, though, I think, I would like to see you try to refine it, yes. I think, as you said, a lot of refinement needs done. John, I think you point out, an issue that I think needs to be addressed, do we want to do it this way, or do we? And let me say, when you refine, I would have to say for one, you're dealing now with chunks of potentially a quarter to a half a million dollar taxpayer money at a shot. So, let me first say that I would not be favorable to approve this unless the ultimate decision was up to the elected body. I totally understand and agree with all the, we're going to grade it, we're going to go through it, we're going to sift it, but I do not think this body can delegate, or should delegate, spending a million and a half dollars potentially, just with staff approval, without us looking at it, especially when we're dealing with the chunks that we potentially would be dealing with. I'm also very interested, though, in, you know, Kristen has said it over and over again until he probably is getting tired of saying it, and that is, us, due to the circumstances this administration's found itself in, you know, we've been doing a lot of responding. We've been doing a lot of last administration's work that never got fully resolved and has got dumped into this administration's lap, and seems to, as with the last nine months of the last administration, be somewhat the tail wagging the dog here. And I say that the amount of time we've spent on projects that other people say we should do, whether it's a stadium, or whether it's Sora, or whether it's us reaching out saying, we want somebody to come in, and we got a quarter of a million dollars to throw up front, versus saying, you know something? This building needs something done with it. This building. We want somebody to come in and do something with it, and us come forward with saying what we want, what we're proposing. We've got one-point-five million to deal with, not to play with, but to use. I mean, I look at Antietam Street myself, lady and gentleman, and I don't understand what we're doing there. We just poured some ninety thousand dollars into a building, which we had to. I mean, no question. But we're going to dump ninety thousand dollars into a building, condemn it, let it sit there, where nobody's going to touch this building. Bank doesn't want it, nobody wants it. We need to address, you have some rundown buildings, you have buildings that need... We need to be told, one, for instance, on this type of issue, the buildings that we're talking about, can you do anything with those buildings? Is there anything feasible to do to those condemned buildings, other than taking down to the ground? And, and that's a rhetorical question for today, okay? Because that's not what you guys are here about. But when you say we have problems downtown and we have building issues, and I see 1.5 billion, and I see some of our landlords downtown, and I see some of the projects that they've come up with, I'm sorta like thinking about Kristen and think, "I'd like to come up with the projects and see if they wanna join us." You know, just thinking out loud, for instance. For years, we've told, "We need a new police station eventually." I have said for years, I was quoted as saying the 100 block of Franklin Street was like a war zone. You have the public defender's office there, you have the parole and probation there, and half a block up, you have the homeless shelter there. And then I look at Antietam Street across from the district court and the circuit court and see condemned buildings. And I personally see the Frederick Law Mall there. I see these buildings taken completely down. I see a new police station there, along with parole and probation and the public defender's office. And, and you get those things where they should be together. You take them away from being a blight on the community that they're in. You put them in an appropriate place, you market a very marketable police station that we have to help pay for this, and suddenly you have new development that is needed and necessary. It's, it's a thought process. I'm not asking anybody to buy into it. But it's what we, as a group, have not done yet.
Well, I think one of the issues is, you know, John said, "We have a building problem." And one of the aspects of that is, the city doesn't own every building in town. Uh, we tax every building, perhaps, every property, but we don't own... But hold on, and then the other side of that is, uh, you know, so we have the carrot and we have the stick. So we have code enforcement to deal with those dilapidated buildings. And I know the staff do the best job they can.
But, but mayor, with all due, with all due respect, code enforcement cannot do anything to a non-owned building.
Well, exactly.
A building that's owned by a bank, a person in bankruptcy with a bank that owns a mortgage on it that doesn't want it, you can't enforce it. You can't go tell somebody that, any more than you can tell them to go fix the roof that we just put $90,000 into.
Well, one of the options, I guess, we have is just to, maybe, I don't know if it's legal or not, we can consult our attorney. But we say, "If we've condemned this building, then let's truly condemn it and take it by eminent domain and say, for ec-, you know, it's..."
You cut me off, mayor, before I had time to finish.
It's creating, it's creating a detriment to, uh, not only public health, safety, and welfare, but our bottom line.
And with all due respect, you, you did cut me off because that's exactly where I was going.
But I think...
Not, not only eminent domain there, but let's talk about something else when we talk about a budget that we're about to embark on. You have five council members who could not have made it more perfectly clear, both during and since we've been in office, that one of our number-one priorities, all five of us, are to take down Melp. You mentioned eminent domain?
Yeah, and I don't know why we never did it.
Well, uh, as, if you all bear with me again, I, I'm gonna reiterate what I was trying to say before. Is it, this is us. I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm criticizing us, okay? We have not, as Kristen is, is pointing out over and over again, we have not sat down as an administration and said what we want. We've been reacting to what...
With all due respect to you, Lou, it doesn't really matter what we want if we don't own every building in town. But, so I think one of the areas that I know that staff have had...
But eminent domain has something to do with what we want, mayor, and what we want is the Melp plant taken down. And I'm here to say right now, for one, I'm ready to vote today to start eminent domain proceedings in that... We've been dealing, this is the third administration that we're going into now being told, "Just give them another month." And, and that's my point. I'm not criticizing the fact, we do need to deal with the stadium. We did need to deal with the Board of Education. I'm not saying we should not do those things and that we should not have done those things. What I am saying, though, is this presentation is a new administration presentation. This is, this isn't the old stuff. This is something new that this administration is being asked to do. And they're being, what we're being presented with essentially is, another way to put it is, geez, our town needs a lot. We got $1.5 million here. We would like to do something with this 1.5 million.
We don't need more plans.
I completely agree.
We have a comprehensive plan, we have zoning in place.
And I completely agree. I'm the first one ready to spend, I'd spend more than one and a half million. But I got, there's the Maryland Theater, there's the stadium, there's, there's Melp. This administration has got to indicate to staff what our priorities are. And that includes our tax rate that we're gonna be getting into. Because we can talk all day long about, "We want Melp to come down, and we wanna spend $1.5 million for downtown renovation, and we wanna bring more police force on, and we wanna clean up our downtown streets, and we don't wanna raise taxes or spend any money to do it." So we've gotta figure out...
I stole my thunder, Lou.
You've got a point there.
We've gotta figure out what our priorities are so that staff can find out...
But we can go into our budget discussion now if you like, if you wanna start talking about increasing the tax rate.
Before we do that, if I could just, uh, say, what we're, what we're trying to do here is respond to a mayor and council priority, which is downtown.
I agree, Bruce.
Mayor and council priority of not being reactive, but proactive. This is your chance as a mayor and council to say, "This is one of our programs from downtown. We're not dependent on the county for this, the state. This is a decision the mayor and council can make that says, 'We've got money available, a priority is downtown. Let's put some money behind what we say.'"
Private-public partnerships.
I completely agree.
And partner with the private sector, which is another thing that you've talked about. So, uh, you're right, Melp is an important issue. There's a, there's a lot of issues, but here's one that's within our grasp. It's manageable for us, it's within our budget, we can pull this off. It needs fine-tuned.
Right, and I think we should, and that's, that's the direction that I said we should. I just sort of went off on a different...
This one's, this one's within your grasp as your statement, for one of your statements, what you wanna do downtown.
I, I completely agree with you, Bruce.
Does anyone else?
And that's why I commend you for, for doing this.
Marty, Kristen, Don, what do you, Penny?
Speaking of fine-tuning, um, have we talked to potential developers or developers about this?
That would be one of our next steps that we'd like to take.
And I think we need to get feedback about whether the concept works and then the fine-tuning.
Well, I think one of the...
And, 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 and I don't, uh, I'd hate for it to be just something that people can flip. I, I, I know you want people to invest, and people invest because they wanna make money. But if it's just a simple flip and we're giving our money to the initial party for no good reason, that's an issue that we have to get into the rules, flipping.
And, and if I may, um, I, I think staffer are skilled at administering these types of programs now. And I look at how we, as, as an organization, have learned from, from previous missteps and, uh, and...
Thank charity, hope.
Well, and, and I look at 140 South Potomac Street, though, and, and that partnership. And, uh, tha- that's a real success. And we have deed restrictions, uh, to prevent, uh, certain types of things from going in there for, for 10 years. Those are the types of things that, that, that we can, uh, have written into the program. The, the other concept is, and again, uh, learning, uh, as we have moved forward, staff have talked about not giving any money upfront. We wanna call it first third, but it's a commitment letter. And when the project's finished, then, then the city would, uh, give the grant based upon the use and occupancy certificate. And, and that way, we're guaranteed to have an actual project done. If a project goes belly up halfway through, then, then our monies are, are available for a different project. So w- we would like the opportunity to, to meet with the developers, to, to hammer these things out and, and to come back to, to the body, uh, with a more detailed program.
And I think you mentioned something at the very beginning about the city's experience, which is a double-edged sword, because many folks don't want us to be in the development business. But because nobody else was stepping up to the plate, the city decided to make some of these, uh, investments in property and have, uh, done different things, like the Artist Live Workspace a couple doors down. And from experience, you know that most of these buildings cost at least three-quarters of a million to a million, if not more, to rehabilitate and to meet the codes that we ourselves have created, um, you know. So I think the level of, uh, the level of matching grant and, and the scope of what you're looking at, I think is realistic in that sense. And I think it is good to get that stakeholder feedback, uh, because there are lots of, as Lou said, things out there that have been discussed already about potential projects. And so, you know, again, people are looking for us to, uh, step up to the plate, so to speak, and put our money where our mouth is, so to speak. And I think this is a way to make these kinds of investments that'll attract the private investment that we so, uh, long, longingly discuss around this table.
And i- if I could add, uh, two more comments, the, I, I, the, the citywide building renovation and... It's renovation and new construction in the definition, so it's not just renovation grants. Something about that gives me some heartburn. We have lots of projects of that magnitude going on, and I don't know how you're gonna pick and choose what's worthy. You, you need some pretty strong criteria if we're gonna do that.
Yes.
I'm wary about that one. And the neighborhood grants, I have a definition thing. Grants up to 10,000 with a 20% owner match required. So somebody's doing a $12,000 bathroom, they only have to put in 2,000, and we're gonna put in 10,000? That's, that's the way I read the...
That's, that, that's the way it's being proposed.
Well, then again, that puts the criteria for such a, I mean, that's sort of almost the reverse of what I would think, that we would do a 20% match if somebody's gonna renovate that.
The, uh, the staff concept there is that, um, uh, what, we're looking to have a narrow, um, list of the types of projects. Projects that would typically result in, uh, increased value at the property, such as central air, such as, uh, a new heating system.
Roof.
A roof. And so, so we are looking to impact, um, the assessable, uh, value of the property. And, um, so it, it would be for that targeted list.
Why, why just 20%? I mean, that's...
Well, that, that, that's certainly something that...
I mean, I guess I'd need to see the criteria to make a judgment on the 20%. And I encourage you guys, by the way, on what you're doing, that I just, th- these are concerns, I have.
Would, would you be more comfortable with a 50%?
I, I'm not sure. I'd just like to know what the criteria are.
Back, back, back when, um, Kathy brought it forward. Kathy, what was it that when you were looking for people to invest in homes, to purchase a home? And at that time, it was how much money towards those to invest, and we didn't have anybody?
That was a community legacy-funded program called Home Pride. We gave $20,000 grants for renovations for owner-occupied homes.
Correct.
And they had to stay in there for at least five years.
They had to stay there.
We did 20%. This is the, owner does 20%.
No, a- a- actually, sir, we, we did $20,000 grant, and I don't believe, I don't believe there was a team match.
There was no match. And that's, and that's the thing, Marty. You know, there's a lot of those that would like to, that own their home, and financially, they cannot see it, to do it.
I'd just like to see the criteria.
But, you know, I mean, that's, I think it's good. I, I know that that worked, because I know those that it worked in our end.
I think you're saying it's hard for people to scrape $2,000 together for a $10,000 project.
Well, it's hard to scrape even that, but to come up with, you know, 20,000 and say, "Hey, you know, well, the city will kick in too." Hmm, I don't think, it's bad enough with curb and sidewalks that everybody's screaming about. But for the city to be able to offer that to the ones who do own their homes, I think that's a no-brainer. I think it's good.
Andrew, I wanna go on record, too, as supporting this program. It's a fairly modest program. It's, appears to be an innovative program, and I think that's good. And I think we do get bang for our buck here. I agree with Lou that if we're gonna spend this money, though, this, this body's got to make the decision, especially if there's some close cases. I do think that there are some extenuating circumstances that you need to look very closely at. Let's just make sure that it's fair and clear to anybody that applies for the program. But, um, I have to say, I don't see us, I don't see us, um, accomplishing much, uh, fa- faster than this program will allow us to accomplish. After all, money is, unfortunately, but it's true, the grease that makes the world turn. And, uh, these grants are sizable enough that people will be attracted to them. So I, I encourage you to go forward and, and let's, let's talk about, as soon as possible, implement English law.
I think it is the type of investment that we can define what we want. You know, we can be pretty clear as to what kinds of investments we're looking for in terms of the, what projects are, are being proposed. And I think, uh, I think perhaps, you know, a good point has been raised that if that amount, significant amount of money is being, uh, put forward, that it should be a decision made by this body, so. I appreciate that perspective. I think we haven't heard from Mr. Alshar yet.
I, I don't have any comments.
Okay. All right. Well, good work, staff. I think, uh...
Very much.
I think there's a clear direction to move forward with gathering more information and fleshing out some of the details. But I think it seems like in general, there's a consensus about the concept. And I think this is a, uh, invest Hagerstown is what we want people to do. So, uh, you know, let's make it happen.
Okay to talk to developers just to get feedback on the 250?
Yeah.
Well, I take suggestions on...
Like a macho-moian if they wanna come on.
Whether that works or some interpretation of that.
Get their input.
I don't think we have to say, take that or leave it.
How far do we reach to develop?
The idea is to get their input.
You mean who, or...
Outside of the city as well? How, what in the direction, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we'll have some sort of a, a forum, a roundtable, uh, where, where we wanna hear from, from people who could actually pull off these types of projects that have a, that have a solid history.
And the reason that I'm saying outside is because the developers here locally. It's like, you know, we continue to talk and talk and talk, and they're telling us what we need to do, but now, you know... So why not go outside, too?
We've gotta have a track record, I think. They've gotta have a proven track record, because we wanna know if, if they're successful pulling off projects somewhere else, and we would like them to be successful here also, and...
I mean, that's the thing. I, you know, I'm just, I'm tired of hearing all of it.
Well, and I don't think the intent of this program, if you will, is to favor local developers.
No, I'm not saying that. You know, when they said about going out and talking to developers, that's why I ask. Okay, how far outside?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So all of these things that we're talking about obviously have budget implications. And, uh, we are going to continue our work session on the budget now. And then next week, we have the hearing on the budget, and we're slated to adopt the budget on May 21st. We have the FY14 proposed tax rate as the first sub-item on the agenda for the budget work session, so maybe we should just jump right in there.
Well, before we do that, can, can we at some point or someone please look at the Melp plant, since it is going to continue on? And as far as, and I would never say eminent domain, but I think that's one part that does need to be tackled. And I'd like to know if, in fact, we can tackle it that way, since we're gonna be paying out the brunt of it anyway.
Yeah, we've got a million in the budget for Melp, just a reminder there. We've talked with John, and he can come back in and talk to the mayor and council about condemnation or eminent domain.
Right. You know, I mean, depending on really how much money we end up having to pay out, too.
And Mike can give you an update in terms of his conversations with the property owner.
It's my understanding that those conversations are continuing. I don't know if they're going anywhere, but I, I do know they're happening.
Yeah, no, I just want information, you know, I mean, that's, you know...
Right.
It's, it's still possible that we can do what we had originally discussed back in December, but on the owner's end, it's taking longer for them to get their contracts in place and their project in place. And, and it's taken a long time. I mean, we've been talking with them, as some know, for over years. So at some point, we may wanna shift courses. But we can come back.
Keeping all options on the table.
Shift course, you mean, talk about legal.
Yeah, so some, another approach.
And I think, and I think we really do need to...
Yeah.
Need to consider that very seriously.
Keeping all options on the table.
But it would be nice to know exactly what's happening.
Yep.
And before that, maybe the next... Maybe the next meeting, if we can work it in, might be an appropriate time for that. If we can work it in.
Okay. So, we understand MELP's a priority for this group, and we'll be back with more information.
Okay. In your packet that you received for tonight, I gave you copies of the public hearing notices as well as the constant yield tax rate. I just wanted to go over those notices with you, just to give you an idea of what we've done to prepare for fiscal year '14's budget. The first handout you have, which is on the back of your memo, is the 2013 Constant Yield Tax Rate calculation provided to us by the state of Maryland. It shows what our tax assessable base was at the start of July 1, 2012, or fiscal year '13. 2.5 million. It calculates what our potential revenue was for fiscal year '13 at our current tax rate of .788 per $100 of assessed value. Comes up with $20.2 million or $20.3 million in potential revenue. They are estimating that our July 1, 2013, or fiscal year '14 assessable base will increase slightly to $2.6 million. The difference between July 1, 2012, and July 1, 2013 is about $20.3 million in an assessable base. I'm sorry. That's the potential revenue for July 1, 2013.
Michelle, if I could. If you compare line one with line six. That's the Assessment Office, or the state's projection of how our assessable base has grown in the past year. So, you can see, that's a large number, obviously, right? In terms of the total. But in terms of the change, it's very small. It's basically flat.
Right.
So, if you're asked, "Has our tax base gone up?", the answer is, based on this, it has, by just a very, very flat amount.
Well, is it six or is it 10? What's line 10?
Line 10 would be the assessable base adjusted for any half-year new construction, estimated full-year construction, and abatements and deletions that they're expecting to receive during the year based on history. So...
Really, you're comparing three, and lines three and 10?
Three and 10.
Three and 10, okay.
Three and 10.
Is even smaller.
It's a smaller increase.
Yeah, that's the only reason.
Some people say, "Oh, my goodness, it's nothing." And that's what we... This is what we're striving for, and this doesn't show much progress.
No. If you multiply line 10 times our current tax rate and subtract that from line three, based on this, we'll have about $54,000 in additional tax revenue in fiscal year '14 if we keep the tax rate the same at .788 per $100 of assessed value. What this is telling us is that if we want to maintain our potential revenue exactly the same as it was during fiscal year '13, we would need to reduce our tax rate to .7859 per $100 of assessed value. The increase that we're potentially going to see in fiscal year '14 is a result of new construction, potential additions that property owners may have made to their homes. Certainly, what we've seen, this is the third year of our triennial reassessment. Most property owners have seen little to no increases in the third year. Because of the homestead tax credit, some did see 5% increase, potentially the first year, slight increases in the second year. We're pretty much out of our homestead tax credit by the third year. All commercial properties saw 100% of their decrease in their first year, or increase. Most of them saw a decrease. The average decrease that we saw as a result of the last triennial reassessment was about 11%. So...
And you're projecting an 8% decrease in the next...
In the next one, in fiscal year '15.
Is there any possibility that that could be overestimated? I mean, does this data... This is saying they reassess the base every year, basically, right? Is that how that changes?
No.
I think they're looking at new construction.
I see.
Kind of like what occurred along Eastern Boulevard.
Okay, so there is... So, the possibility that it decreases is just based on their triennial reassessment when they come in? If there is new construction in the next three years, that will certainly add or offset whatever decrease was in the...
Typically, what we see in years two and three is a result of new construction and the homestead tax credit are increases of 1% to 5%. 5% meaning that we've had lots of new construction, 1% meaning there's very little. I do have a history that I can pass out here from the state of Maryland. It is the assessable base for all of the counties located in the state of Maryland for the last 10 or 12 years. And I have Washington County highlighted for you. You can see that Washington County, in the last few years, has experienced 18% decreases. City of Hagerstown only saw 11%. The most recent triennial reassessment, Washington County still experienced a 7% decrease in assessable base. So, we're anticipating 8% as far as our next triennial reassessment. We're hoping. We're overestimating, but based on these numbers, I don't believe we're overestimating.
And you said for the city, in the last triennial reassessment, we had a decrease of 11%?
An average decrease of 11%. It was slightly less than what the county saw as a whole.
The decrease is slowing down, but it's still a decrease.
Right. The state, on average, has seen decreases here at the bottom of '16, '17. And in fiscal year...
First quarter of 2013.
At first quarter of 2013, they're expecting a 4% decrease.
So, statewide, the market value, the assessable base trend is still declining, just not at the same level experienced three years ago.
Right.
Which just further supports the best estimates that we have right now for our local city of Hagerstown.
Is that true for every county?
Except Howard and Montgomery are...
I think every county for the state is included.
Howard and Montgomery are the only ones who are positive.
Frederick County has seen, you know, they saw 22%, 24% decreases when we were seeing smaller decreases. So, it's still pretty significant. It's still impacting us. Slow recovery.
And, Michelle, if you would, just in those middle years, where Washington County had a 32% increase, 58, 64, 40, those are much higher percentage increases than what we show in our city history.
Correct.
Section 3.
Right. Correct.
We had nice increases those years.
But we didn't see that much.
Nothing like that.
I think this speaks to even more the importance of what we just heard about, which was making the kinds of investments that will improve the assessable base, you know? That, I think, is the best kind of investment, or as Mr. Munson puts it, the bang for the buck.
So, then the next page in your handout is the notice that we posted in the Herald Mail that shows a real property tax increase. That's a little misleading. We're not having a tax rate increase. It's showing that, based on the constant yield tax rate, the city will experience a tax revenue increase, simply because the assessable base has increased slightly. So, it's showing, it's kind of putting into words what the constant yield tax rate showed on the previous page. Just want to remind everyone that there is a public hearing on the proposed real property tax rate, held next Tuesday at 7:00 PM here at City Hall and Council Chambers. That public hearing is available for potential citizens, property owners, anyone interested in discussing or talking about the tax rate that we have proposed for next fiscal year to provide them with public... The opportunity for public comment.
I'm glad we're not made of public bias, so we don't have discretion on how we word that notice.
Correct. Any questions about either of those two, or the information about the assessable base?
Did you... There was some information that came in an email. Do we have that information?
Yes, I'll hand that out here in a little bit.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks. I just didn't know if I was missing something.
The last page...
A good teacher, by the way. You don't put... Give the handout before you do your presentation.
Don't want you reading it ahead of time. I want you listening to me now. The last page is the public hearing that was also published in the Herald Mail regarding the proposed budget. Details the amount proposed of expenditures by fund type for all funds. We also have a public hearing scheduled for next Tuesday at 7:00 PM here in the Council Chambers to allow the general public to come in and discuss items that we have proposed in the proposed fiscal year '14 budget document, and give them the opportunity to just provide public comment.
But two separate hearings next Tuesday. People may want to talk about both, or they may have overlap, but we have to show that we're conducting two hearings.
Yes. We scheduled them both. We typically try to put them on different days, but the county's holding their public hearing tonight, so we didn't want to interfere with, you know, city residents' opportunity to discuss anything related to Washington County in a public hearing. So, that's why we put ours both on the 14th. Okay.
Any questions on those notices, or the tax base, or tax revenue information?
Okay, kind of in relation to the assessable base, this handout was emailed a couple of weeks ago, based on comments that we received from Mayor and Council, asking that we include the county tax rate, state tax rate, on one of our charts. We did update it. We did send it to you. I just wanted to hand it out tonight to make sure that everybody has a copy of it. We've shown on here history of the city's assessable base and the change in the assessable base, history of the real estate tax rate, as well as the county, state, and the combined tax rate for city residents and property owners.
So, this would just replace page six of section three in your budget book, and really, the only difference is going to be to your right-hand side, where we've added those additional four columns to just provide a little bit more detail.
All right. No questions on that? I'll move on to the wages and benefits discussions, and I have a handout for that. Okay, at some of our previous budget meetings, we were asked to provide you with some additional information regarding the impact of one cent on the real estate property tax revenue, as well as some employee wage information. I'm just going to start at the top of this page. Just mentioning again what the current tax rates are for fiscal year '13 and fiscal year '14, same numbers that were on the schedule that I just handed out. There is an additional column here for the county tax rate for people who are not located in a city or municipality. So, you can see that the county tax rate is .823 for city residents. However, if you're not a city resident, and that's any city within the municipality within the county, your tax rate is .948, because the county does provide those people with additional services that are not provided to people within the city limits. And again, the combined rate for city residents is 1.723 per $100 of assessed value of their property. How much does each penny on the real estate tax rate generate? So, if we were to increase our tax rate from .788 to .798, which would be one penny, based on the assessable base that we have in our budget document in fiscal year '13, each penny would get us about $250,000 in additional revenue. That's about flat in fiscal year '14. However, based on the 8% decrease we could potentially see in fiscal year '15, each penny will only get us about $230,000 of additional tax revenue. For each $100,000 of assessed value, a property owner will see about $10 per year. Per $100,000 for a one-cent tax rate increase on their annual tax bill. The calculation for that is right below. We did determine that the median home price here in Hagerstown is $174,000. So, based on the median home price, one-cent increase would add $17.40 annually to the real estate tax bill for a home valued at $174,000. And, of course, if we were to do 2 cents or 3 cents, you would just multiply that by 2 or 3. Do I have any questions about any of the supplemental tax rate information that we've provided here? And again, you can refer to section three, page six, or the handout that I just gave you, which is also section three, page six, to provide you with our assessable base history information. All right, for employee wages, we were asked to provide you with additional information about the cost of different types of employee wage adjustments. The first would be cost of living adjustments for... Based on a percentage, so if we were to increase our wage scales by 1% or 2% for a full year, the general fund would have an additional cost of $200,000 or $300,000. You can just multiply that by 2 or 3 to get to those amounts. For all funds, for the total city, 1% COLA would equate to $300,000. Another scenario that has been looked at was increasing the grade and step scales by a flat amount, such as 50 cents per hour, 75 cents per hour, so that each employee got the exact same increase. Because a person who's making more, well, 1% is more for them than it is for someone who's making less. So, to ensure that everybody got the same increase, if we just did a 50-cent increase on their hourly rate in the general fund, we would have an additional expense of $386,000 for wages and benefits. Other total city would be $557,000. And, of course, that just multiplies out to get you the different amounts for a different flat rate amount. Have any questions about those two types of cost of living adjustments?
How would a flat rate increase per hour affect the out-years? That would be... I would imagine that you would have to maintain that level, then?
For the out-years, yes. So, and the 1% also. Either one of these two, each out-year would increase by that amount.
So, if you implemented, say, July 1, 2013, start of this coming fiscal year, then that increase becomes part of the base for 2014, July 1, 2014.
As well as the base for '15 and '16, and every single year after that. The cost of one step for all employees would be, in the general fund, $531,000. Right now, the policy states that employees receive a step on their anniversary date. However, because employees haven't received them for a while, and to make costing this out a little bit easier, we costed out one step for a full year, beginning on July 1st. The general fund cost would be $531,000. Total city would be $647,000. Steps do not impact everyone's pay, whereas a COLA does. So, of the 437 positions or employees that we have, only 170 people in the general fund would actually receive a pay increase, and 44 people in other funds would receive a pay increase. So, only 49% of our employees would receive a pay increase if we...
Did steps only?
Just did one step.
Correct.
Whereas, the other two scenarios, 100% of our employees would get an increase. Do I have any questions about the wage and benefit information?
I'm interested to hear the feedback with the council.
And we had 400...
Go ahead. I'm interested to hear your feedback.
We had $400,000 as a set aside.
Yes.
In the general fund.
About last... For the general fund, yeah. But last week, we had a $60,000 position, and I can't remember, but it was like $110,000 altogether, if I remember.
That's correct.
Out of that 400,000, I mean, ostensibly, that was the funding source that was given to us.
Correct. So, if we wanted to do something for a full year or over and above $400,000, that $400,000 contingency budgeted for, we would need to either increase a revenue source of some sort, whether it be the tax rate or some other fee that we charge for services, or we would need to develop a new revenue source that could be implemented quickly versus one that would require a study and an implementation process.
Or just another expenditure.
Or we could reduce an expenditure. That's correct.
I'd like to see, Marty. Is that step program premised on the previously adopted Springstead evaluation?
The grade and step scales are premised on the previously-based Springstead.
In the current contracts.
Anyone else, thoughts? I think the courageous conversation this council needs to have is, as Lou always says, are you willing to bite the bullet and increase revenue through property taxes? I know Aunt Susie's going to have to pay more on her property taxes, Marty. I know you love to look out for Aunt Susie, that's why I'm saying that. But I think that's a courageous conversation we need to have, so, you know, the employees have gone a long time without any enhancement of their compensation. I mean, obviously, just by looking at the information that we've been given, there is a way to adjust compensation for all employees, or we can choose to implement steps. I think perhaps there needs to be a look at a combination of those, those things, but what stands out to me most is there's just not enough revenue.
Well, I'll start off then, since you, I, I don't think we need to increase taxes to give the employees a, a, something. I think we could, for instance, do a 2% cost of living, 400,000, and, and we can debate those positions, we could probably find other ways to fund those positions and/or this, without increasing taxes, I think, for, for that amount. I don't think this is the year to do that, to increase taxes. I think we don't know what that assessable base is going to be next year. We're projecting an 8% loss, but we, we don't know that. We don't know which of these looming projects, be they stadium, planning efforts, whatever, investment, although that investment is in the budget, it's not generally funded, it's bond-funded, but, but that aside, that was included in the budget that was talked about earlier. So, I, I think we can do it this year, I think next year is the year, because we'll know what that assessable base is, and when we debate these other projects in the next weeks, months, years, whatever, because we don't have any cost estimates right now, we're not going to know what they are by the time we close this budget. I think that's the time when we know what our real assessable base is for the next three years. I think doing it this year is premature and unnecessary.
When you talk about projects, you're talking about whether it's melt, the stadium, parking.
We have money set aside for melt, I'm not, you know.
We've got a million.
This is the budget also.
A million?
Well, that, that seems, I'm reluctant to just automatically approve more than that, myself.
Kristen.
First, let me thank staff, Michelle in particular, I met, I guess we met for about two and a half hours yesterday, and, and I feel like I definitely understand a lot more about some of the sections I had questions on, and I think that, to put it in perspective, that, that projected 8% decrease, and I like to put things in simple tax terms for folks, is about $207 million on, on the base, which equates to about nine cents at the end of the day. So, so that, that's about, if you base them on $230,000, because you're taking that $20,000, $21,000 loss on, on the, the value of the penny, so to speak. So, in looking at the budget, trying to, to put the pieces of what, and I expressed it several times yesterday, trying to put the pieces of what everybody sort of wants out of the budget, you've got the taxpayers that, that have concern of, of increased rate, employees, you know, concern of, of frozen wages, and the business community that wants us to invest more. And so I broke it into two sections, obviously, the enterprise side and the general fund side, and I'll just throw out these couple of items for consideration, because, again, as I said to Michelle several times yesterday, what I try and do with the budget is figure out some equal balance between revenue and expense, a generation of revenue and decreases in expenses, as well as, at the same time, trying to find a reasonable path forward to be able to afford the things I would like and others would like for us to do, because I view it just as I would at my home budget. You know, I'd love a $35,000 vehicle, but, but I go out and find a vehicle that I can afford that fits within the budget that I have to work within. So, when I did that, as Marty alluded to, the issues of, of our capital financing, and as the mayor has alluded to in terms of investment, I, I came up with this, and I'm just going to throw this out there as ideas. The first is, we've got a 23% in our cash reserve balance in the general fund, about $8.4 million, which is about 2.8 months' worth of, of operating expense, industry standards at a minimum of 10. Even if we took that 1.5 million that the mayor's talking about out of that fund, it's a one-time expense, which is what it's only supposed to be used for, that still leaves you with approximately two months' worth of that reserve, okay? So that, that addresses that issue. I continue to go back to this issue of this 4.6 million in principle for a stadium. I, I don't feel that the budget allows us to afford that, and I go back to this equation of 3 million from the city, which would be coupled by county, state, and, and private investment, to give you that $21 million project, that three is, me as a council member, that's the limit that I am comfortable with going to, and be able to afford those other types of things within the budget that I think you could accomplish over that four-year period, because also I don't look at the budget as sort of a one-year item, you've got to look at how you're going to afford it the next four, five years, and everybody's aware of that. I also think that we need to look at the deck, the third deck, but I think when you take the stadium and, and the board of ed and other things like that out of the equation, you don't need a 500-space deck. So, so what is the affordability of a 300-space deck? And you program that in, in both of those, or I should say all three of those, reduce that long-term capital debt process, or, or cost component. And then, that gets you to the, the next item that I looked at, which was trying to figure out, and, and let me just preface this by saying, I didn't vote for the Springstead study when I was here before, I wasn't a huge proponent of it, I didn't feel it was applicable to, to, to the city in terms of its comparatives to other entities, as was pointed out on this sheet, where one of the comparative entities, jurisdictions in that Springstead was Howard County, and you can clearly see over that model that Howard County clearly does differently than we do. That aside, I think that there is a process whereby we could entertain trying to figure out how to put those steps back in place, where you would take the step that is lost, that three-year process, and say, we're going to phase that in at a half a step a year over a six-year period, in concert with your COLA and your steps that should be following now, so that you break that up over time, if you will, and it's more manageable. And then, by doing that, it allows you to address two things within that negotiating process, which is what you're going to have to do with your employee groups, and the first thing is, it's got to be a package deal. In other words, you can't absorb 12%, and 13%, and 14% on, on your retirement and benefit side, and 12% and 15% increases in your healthcare, and absorb full-step increases and your, your other items on, on your, your wage side. The dollar just doesn't work in, in those terms. And so, the next item for me is, I'm slowly warmed up to this, as other jurisdictions have it in place, is some type of non-residential applicable stormwater management fee. Clearly, the federal and state regulatory process has mandated, an unfunded mandate that we address our aging infrastructure as it relates to stormwater management, nothing we can do about that, but I'm not certain that I would want to place that burden squarely on the residential component of our city, because we're trying to get folks to, to entice to move into the city, and clearly, they don't share the same level of impervious areas that impact our stormwater management as non-residential, large, commercial, and, and large, you know, you know, apartment-type complex. So I think that, that's one of the things we have to look at. I also think that, that we, and I outlined for, for Michelle several, several items yesterday, which were, were minor fee adjustments, and I think that those minor fee adjustments would speak to those couple of positions that you could keep out of that 400,000 that you wouldn't want to dig into for this year. I, I think that we need to set a limit on our pay go. Our pay go is going from about 600 and some thousand this year, or this past year, proposed to jump to 1.2 million for this coming year, and, and I think we need to say what we can afford. If it's 900,000, then that's our limit, and we need to figure out how to space that out over time, so, so that it isn't jumping up and down so much, and, and, and we live within the limitation, and we program projects accordingly. The other item that I noted in the budget is, this past year, we are going to subsidize our golf course to the tune of about $300,000. That number continues to grow. We propose in our budget for it to decrease to 200,000, but, but I got to be very honest, and I'm a golfer, but, but if it doesn't show some positive turnaround from the investments that we've made in clubhouses and beer sales, I think we have to ask ourselves a real hard question of whether we should be subsidizing a golf course at $300,000 a year, 10 years down the road. I just think that that's a long-term question we need to address. The other issue is, I think if we're going to make these major investments in downtown for these large projects like the stadium and the parking deck, the parking deck of which will serve to provide opportunities for, for county offices parking downtown, and I just got done a conversation with folks that work in the election office just this afternoon about the difficulties with parking, I think that's where we need to have that conversation with the county on that 400K that they were willing to, to negotiate with us on for the reduction in the 911 center, and showing that it's going to a, a, number one, a specific project, and number two, a project that benefits, you know, the existing of county office buildings downtown. The second component of that parking is, in order for the general fund to not subsidize the parking fund, I think we need to bring back those parking fee recommendations to this table, to this new administration, because if one thing I heard loud and clear from the former Frederick mayor, Ron Young, for Frederick, the reason they have so many decks is because they built parking and they kept making sure that it paid for itself, so they keep building more, not decrease the fund, not provide more, in the hopes that more business will come. It, it just isn't working that way. I think we've seen that for at least the last three years, that it isn't working that way. So I think we need to bring those, those parking fee increases back to the table, and I think that as we've taken on more debt, a lot of folks probably didn't see this in the budget, but from about 2002 to about 2013, we have increased our, our bonded amount from about $34 million to about $80 million. And in doing so, a good hefty sum of that has been on our utility side, but the jurisdictional authority for us to, to claim that is only on the city property owner, the city taxpayer, and I think we need to make sure our differential within our utility account, both on our water and sewer fund, should be paying a dividend into the general fund to account for that jurisdictional limitation and the increase that that debt load is causing on, on our tax base. So, so I think that that has an opportunity, I know we're proposing 250 this year, but I think that has an opportunity to get to about 400,000 as a good, solid figure. The next item that I saw in our budget was our CDBG, and the areas that were sort of moving the decrease in those state and federal funds of, of those entitlement fund program, we're, we're moving a little bit of that in the general fund, and I think we need to make sure that we limit that, that movement or that migration of things we traditionally fund with CDBG funds into the general fund, and have frank conversations about, you know, what that limitation is, because we can't continue to move all of that in if the federal, you know, and state money's going to continue to decline over time. And then the last item on the general fund side was the conversation we've been having about property sales, and I think that impacts our budget in two ways. The first is, obviously, on capital. Our ability to invest in, in, in actual projects downtown based on the buildings that we're holding, because it does us no good to hold buildings that are going to remain vacant if we're going to have to keep maintaining them in a vacant status. It, it just isn't working. If they're not occupied, then, then, then it, then it isn't beneficial, and so we, we need, we need to have an evaluation of that, and we need to move them either off our books, just as we need to move some of these bad investments off our books, so that it decreases our operational impact. And a good example is one of the buildings alone, I think the operational expense for the year is about $20,000, you know, and that isn't huge in the grand scheme of things, but when you're talking about finding $110,000 to fund two, two positions, you know, that is a big impact to, to, to the operational expense. The last couple of things on the enterprise fund side, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I, I can't accept that we're looking at a 14% increase to our sewer rates, you know, just in next year alone, unless we address some of those other things that I think that, that are important to account for in this budget. And for me, I see this budget as sort of a period, and I think Marty put it well, of, of sort of implementing these things, or at least considering implementation of these things this year, to give us a real, a much better idea of whether tax increases are sort of the, the, the item of last resort in our FY15 budget. I mean, I think that question's going to come, you know, three or six months from now, based on the actions that we take on these other items that I've outlined. So on the enterprise fund side, I think that, and I've talked to other jurisdictions, and, let me preface this by saying, I have all the faith in the world in Mike Spiker and, and, and his offices, but, but I, I don't know why we've always done this, but taking 1,100 accounts off of our utility and not charging them a base rate costs us money. And we base that system, so to speak, if you will, we're sizing that system and growing that system based on those connections, and by taking them off and not having that base rate negatively impacts our enterprise fund budget, both on water and sewer side. I also think not having a 2% late fee negatively impacts our, our, our requirement to carry that debt load from month to month when we're trying to make our bills.
Two or 10?
Two. It's proposed at 1% in, in section, section eight of the budget, but, but my, but my proposal is 2%. And I think if I did my rough calculations, that'll generate about $315,000 between, between the utilities. And then, the, the other item is the differential as it applies to debt, and I don't, I don't remember that one at the moment. And then the last item on the enterprise fund side is the, is the 400K, and that speaks to that dividend from that differential. So, those are just some of the things that I thought were appropriate for this administration to consider between the adoption of this budget and, let's say, six months into our FY14 process, that I think are going to give us a, a different perspective of footing as it applies to the budget going in to FY15, and, and a much better idea of, of the necessity to, to talk about a tax rate increase and, and, you know, the, the potential necessity for it. But thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
Sure, you're welcome.
Councilmember, did you have an item between the phase-in of the steps and the non-residential stormwater fee? I was just trying to keep a list of your suggestions, and I wasn't sure if there was an item in between or, or not.
Yes. That item was the, the synergy program that I brought up several times now, and I brought it up again this evening in our discussion about the, the workers' comp, and, and that is, you know, I, I think that, that we need to have some, some, some type of, of process whereby we sit down with the county and the board of ed and figure out whether there are areas where we're not consolidate, where we can, where we can improve efficiencies of, of the resources we, we obtain and provide. Questions, comments?
I'd like to thank Kristen and staff. Seriously, I, those of us who've worked with Kristen before know, outline by line he is and how many questions he has, and I appreciate them sitting down and going over these things.
I'm just asking, in general, we talked about the stadium, the things, am I correct, we still have 6.2 million in the budget for the stadium for this year? Is that right from the CIP on page 22?
Actually, if you...
CIP project. If you actually look at the detail itself on page 51.
It's 4.6 in principle, right?
It doesn't hit, this fiscal year.
That's not, that's not...
It, it hits the following fiscal year, that's why I'm saying the premature raising taxes, we know what we're doing, that and a lot of other things.
Okay, so we would not be planning on spending any money on the stadium in this coming fiscal year?
Well, unless we decided to issue capital, we wouldn't be paying any debt service on that capital this fiscal year.
Okay.
We wouldn't be spending any money.
Okay, unless we issued the bonds, the bonds...
If we issued the bonds, we still wouldn't be spending any, well, Michelle, you should answer, but the debt service is the following year. That's why the big impact is the following.
Let's go through page 51, just so everybody's on the same...
And one of the reasons I bring it up is, is after this, we're going to be talking municipal stadiums, all right?
I think if we start at the bottom of page 51, right? Doesn't that help? At least in terms of what our assumptions were on the CIP.
The bottom of page 51, in fiscal year 14, we have budgeted...
This is page, I'm sorry... This is page, I'm sorry, page 51 of Section 9.
Correct. We have about 2 million for planning and design and 4.3 million for land acquisition. Fiscal year 15 would be construction of the new stadium at 27.6 million, and that's an estimate provided to us by staff. And then if you flip to the next page, it shows what the funding sources would be for this. We have a future issue of, for bond, of 1.04 million in fiscal year 14, which we would probably issue in fiscal year 15. We're anticipating that majority of capital needs for this project would be late in fiscal year 14. We would be anticipating a grant of 1/3, which we proportion that in each fiscal year, as well as a stadium contribution from the county and private contributions from either local interested parties or the signs. We've got that proportioned over fiscal year 14 and 15. Total bond financing would be 4.6 million, or 5.6 million for the city's portion. However, the county's portion would also need to be financed through a general obligation issue because what we've heard, what we heard last year was that they were going to offset an expenditure for us, so we would still need to have that capital upfront. We would need to have a capital, a general obligation issue for that capital of 5.6 million from the county. Of course, if we were to receive grants from the state, they typically provide us with their money after the expenditures happen within a year or two. And then stadium private contribution typically would be paid upfront, so that's not something we would probably need to finance.
So that's a framework that would allow something to begin in the coming year, but it also is packed with all kinds of funding assumptions, obviously. It's structured on the 1/3 state, 1/3 private, combined 1/3 of city and county.
There's a page in here that shows the debt service increase.
3.2 million.
And that's what I pointed out in our presentation.
Where's that marked?
It's on Section 7, page 4.
Thank you.
If you look at, the lines aren't numbered, but about the, in 2015, not 14, 14, 15, projection P R O G J, and you go down that line-
You see the debt service?
And you look at the debt service numbers, you can see where-
It jumps from 2.1 million, yeah.
Got you to 3.3.
Virtually doubles, you know. And then it continues up, it trends up for a few years. That's the stadium, and I think there's a parking garage in there as well. Couple things like that, big projects.
And if you want to see it in detail, if, same section, if you look on page 11, this would be just the general fund debt only.
Okay.
You'll see where we've outlined them by all of our current issues that we have, and then future ones, which would start with the 2013, 14. We've included there what the principal is and what our interest in terms, assumptions were for each of those. So in fiscal year 15, you'll see that it's looking like 12.8 million in bond issuance. And again, that was primarily the stadium project.
And then Lou, you can go to the projects by funding source in the CIP, in the Section 9, and look at bond financing, and you can, you need to trace out which projects are driving that, that increase in debt service in Section 9, page 14.
And that really is a good page to look at when you're interested in-
Sean, try to turn to your-
No, no, by all means.
I've been chastised, now you haven't.
All right, Section 9, page 14. You can see very clearly where the bond financing is by project, you know, it's driving that. Staff lays it out very well, and our budget has been good about that, and they're good about doing the out-year projections. And that's what the value of looking at the out-years. But until we make decisions on what those numbers are going to be, I can't see, that's why I'm saying we can hold our tax rate this year, and knowing in our heads when we make commitments, that's the direction we're going. And the same with the general fund, on page 17, you can see the projects. And the CIP pay-go funding is sometimes called. You can see that doubles as well, and then it remains high for the out-years. And it's to staff's credit that they lay it out there and say this is where we're going, if you make certain presumptions about out-year projects.
And if I could, just on that summary of pay-go, our history has been pretty much 1.2 before we hit the tough years. So one of the assumptions, and these are assumptions, I was trying to get back to 1.2, but also, we have been shifting certain expenditures to our bonds. They're legal, you can do it with bonds, but a healthy budget, you do it under pay-go. So we're trying to shift some things out of bonds, back to pay-go, and obviously, we've got our work cut out for us based on those projections. So it's projections with assumptions, what you've got there on page 17.
And as far as fund balance goes, again, I don't think this is the time, if we have to take a nip to do a little bit, but I don't think this is the time to be taking down the fund balance, because any of these projects, proposals, whether it's downtown investment, stadium, parking deck, whatever, have a contingency in them. They have, we don't know where we're going. A good use for fund balance is one-time projects. You don't want to use it for recurring expenses, because you can't use it again the next year once you use it.
Well, and when you do that, if you start budgeting it for ongoing expenses, what the analysts see is you're budgeting a deficit, because you can't report it as-
I think we all agree that's not any way to use our reserve.
I mean, it just goes beyond just a philosophy. It ends up in your reporting.
At one time-
Yeah, what Kristen says it could be used for would be appropriate, but yeah, ongoing.
Well, if, for instance, the downtown investment program, we wanted to mix pay-go with bonds, that might be another way of doing it, studying funding at all with one source or another. You might want to go there, but-
And keep in mind, as you're talking about funding sources, you still have the money from the sale of the Army Reserve. You talked at the time about that being for one-time projects, but we haven't flushed that out either. Something just to keep in mind.
But, you know, once again, you do a stadium, you do a parking deck, you do some of these buildings downtown. The costs can easily be 5, 10, or 15% different than what you projected, and/or the funding doesn't turn out the way we projected. State funding may not be 10 million, it might be 8 million on a stadium, might be 7, we don't know. And whether we want to go there or not hasn't been determined, but it's best to keep our powder dry if we do anything.
Any other comments, questions on the budget?
Good job.
Yeah, just a comment. We, meaning everybody except Kristen, hasn't necessarily had the benefit of those things that he talked about. I think we probably ought to have the benefit of them, if you could include them in your comments before we, your testimony, your comments, before we adopt this budget, that would be helpful to us.
And I think what you were suggesting, Councilmember Elshire, that those are items to work on basically between now and the next six months for the most part.
That would be my-
They're not issues we can resolve in the next two weeks.
Because, you know, in-
Because in that rough map, it doesn't get us there. I mean, obviously, the first day, it just doesn't get us there, but it gets us in, you know, I don't want to say conservative or optimistic, but I think it gets us, you know, in about the 1.5 million range, and you're trying to figure out how to come up with 3.2 million between now and next year. I mean, that's the difference, right?
Right.
And so I think, that's why I say you're just not going to find it in this budget, and you're not going to find all of those items to address it between now and next one. But they move that mark, so to speak, you know, between now and, so you have some ability to debate whether it's 9 cents or 4 cents or, you know, what have you. And one of them in the next six months could completely fall off the mark and, you know, and not, you know, not come to fruition, one of those big-ticket items.
Let me just amend my statement a little bit then. There's not a one of us sitting at this table that relishes increasing property taxes. The consequences, both social and political, are going to be bad. So we need to look at every alternative, and what alternatives have been suggested by Kristen and others that might occur to you all. I really would like to be briefed on it and be knowledgeable about it before we have to make final decisions about serious increasing it.
Absolutely.
I'd like to take a little straw poll of two issues or recommendations for revenue. One would be stormwater management fees. I think, Kristen, you've suggested non-residential only. Is that what I understand to be proposing?
I think that if I were going to consider, just me, starting that conversation, I think that's where, for me, the conversation lends its help to.
Well, for now, let's not consider residential or non-residential, but I'm general feeling on a stormwater management fee assessed based on the amount of impervious surface on a property. Marty, how do you feel about that?
Well, number one, we don't need it to fund this budget. And I want to make sure-
No, I'm not saying it's for this, right, this is long-term.
We don't need those revenue increases to fund this budget.
Right. And we couldn't implement some kind of feel like that for this budget anyway.
I'm wary, because we're saying, invest in Hagerstown, but, you know, we're going to pay higher taxes, not just property taxes, but higher fees. And unless we have the county, I think it puts us in a bad, environmentally, I support them, but I think they ought to be statewide and/or countywide. They ought to be countywide or statewide. It puts the municipality in a bad light. And so, and I think we need commercial investment, we need that tax-based investment, and I think we're sending, unfortunately, the wrong message. And it's too bad, because I think they ought to be required statewide, but when you just do one place, you get singled out and beat up with it, and I think it sends the wrong message.
How about you, Don?
I'm with Marty. I think Marty just explained it perfectly. Lou?
I won't discuss anything.
Penny?
I don't know. You know, when I look at businesses that come into town and, you know, they're annexed in or whatever, I know that there is a lot that the city ends up offering, whether it be, we'll forget taxes for however long, we'll do this for however long, and, you know, this is something that I have to think about.
And what about the idea of a fire tax? What are your thoughts on the idea that we would have a, basically a fee for every property to support the operations of the fire department?
Well, I'll just say ditto to what I said about the stormwater tax. I'll just say ditto. I mean, we have professional force with the city, and taxpayers lay out a lot of money for that. And then, all around us, we have other firefighting, and I think the county's going to have to face it, but I'd rather have us face that together than not. And so I'm reluctant to go that direction as well.
Kristen? For me, I get to see the unique perspective of a fire tax that was put in place in Frederick County, and now they are rescinding that tax this year and putting it back into the general fund, because basically, the general fund's been subsidizing, you know, the process, and I don't think that it has worked as envisioned from its outset. But that's just a sort of a fly-on-the-wall view of, you know, one jurisdiction that has done it and it not been successful.
Don, what do you think?
At some point, Marty hit upon this a little bit, the county's going to have to face this issue. If there's any possibility of saving the volunteer system in the county, they're going to have to face this issue. And that's the time when we need to face this issue as well. I think it's somewhat more logical to think about supporting a fire tax, from my point of view, than it is just thinking about supporting a rain tax, however. But again, when, and if we implement these taxes, all we're going to do is encourage people to move out of the city, and they're going to be replaced with poorer people in all probability. That's a real concern of mine.
And again, I'm not saying that we're even considering these things.
I know.
I want to hear your thoughts on-
There's no easy solution to-
Many people say, just do this. Just implement this, and that'll be it. So what are you thinking?
You know, it's interesting. I look at what staff presented to us today, and I see that the median home price is $174,000, which means if you raise people's property taxes by a penny, the owner of a median home would pay about a dollar and 50 a month more than they're paying now. Or, you know, somewhere in the pennies per week. The only reason I bring that up is because there's this huge resistance to raising the property tax. And I'll just say to you this, if you want to chase people out of town, tell them they have a county tax, a property tax, a stormwater management fee, and a fire tax.
Yeah.
Tell them that that's what you're going to tax them with, and you won't have anybody wanting to live here. Raise somebody's taxes to the point that a median homeowner is paying $2 or $3 a month more than they're paying now, and candidly, that type of increase isn't noticed. But even if the other taxes are de minimis, when you start, you know, getting a tax bill for the stormwater management, I'm getting a tax bill for the this or for that, yeah, what I would like to do when I look at those things is look at what is the most progressive and/or regressive taxes, which would be fairest across the board. But when I see what a penny in real estate tax generates for the city and what it costs the average property owner, it seems to me that that's just much more palatable. And as you can see from the handout given, how far did we drop the combined rate? It went down-
12 and 1/2 cents.
12 and 1/2 cents? Not a soul noticed it. You know, 12 and 1/2 cents, it goes down, and I would, so, you know, that's my reaction. I think instead of finding every source to kill people with on this tax and that tax, I would much prefer to see realistic property taxes that support our budget and to continue to lobby the county for more.
Yeah.
More of that rebate to our taxpayers, because it's still not where it should be. And we've sort of laid off that, because we've got what we've got, but I think we need to push that also. So I'm not against it, but I think what's been said is absolutely correct. We have, the only way a fire tax comes in for the city of Hagerstown, in my opinion, is if the county decides that we're going to consolidate the fire services on a countywide basis, and then it'd be supported by a countywide fire tax, and we remove that from our budget. I mean, that's the only way I see citizens in this city paying a fire tax. They're already paying a fire tax right now. It's part, it's known as property taxes, to support the general fund that pays for our professional firefighters, which we need desperately.
Penny, what do you think?
And I want those professional firefighters right here. I don't want county to do jack crap, okay? Sorry, crap's wrong, that's the way it is. I think that the citizens will look at another tax and go off more than having to raise tax, property tax. When you look at the water and sewer bill, with everything that we continue to get hit with on that water and sewer bill, for the life of me, I don't know why people haven't been in here screaming and hollering about that. And of course, what do we have on that? We have a lot of it that deals with the state, you know. I mean, it's a no-brainer. You know, people that are listening and really want to listen are going to realize that it is not that huge amount of money. And that's the thing.
In terms of a property tax rate increase.
And property tax. And you're talking to one that's Social Security, okay? That's, you know, you do what you need to do.
Well, and the idea is-
And that's why people, when you got reduced by 12 cents, didn't, when I say we're going to get new credit, because they didn't notice it.
Right.
It really is not that massive of a deal. It really is not that massive of a deal, a couple pennies.
I think the county continues to cripple us. I really do. I mean, what are we actually getting? What do we actually get from the county? I hear this over and over again, and they will look at me and say, "Schools." And then the complaint is, "And how many children do I have in school?" So, you know?
Well, the counterargument to that is, it does benefit everybody to have a well-educated population and work for it.
But, but do you hear what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
I mean, this is what you get...
Sure.
...from citizens, all right? So...
All right, well, thank you for that little intellectual exercise we had just now. I wanted to get everybody's feedback on that, because these are proposals that are being discussed, they're listed as possible revenue sources in the budget in the future. So, again, we're not making any decisions here tonight, just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Mayor, if I could, is the goal...
Please.
Next Tuesday, we've got the hearings at 7:00. Is the goal to pretty much have the budget wrapped up next Tuesday, so then you can adopt it on the 21st? Is that the goal?
That's still our goal.
Sounds that way.
Sounds good, doesn't it?
And do you want us to schedule a work session in the afternoon on the budget prior to the public hearing?
I think that would be helpful, and I think if anybody has any last-minute changes, I know staff distributed the worksheet, you know, for any suggestions, proposed modifications, so... Did you not get that, Marty?
Oh, sheet itself.
Yeah, so if, you know, you know, I know Kristen worked with the finance department, so if anyone else, I encourage you to keep doing that, and so if there are any outstanding issues next week, I do think we should schedule a brief work session prior to the hearing.
The overall with this, where do we exactly stand with the employees?
Well, let me take...
What are we going to do? We do, you know, we're hearing this, and we're hearing that, but there has not been a decision made as to what are we going to do?
And I'd like to chime in on that if I could, because you're right, you've got a budget before you that's balanced with no tax rate increase. Unlike the last four years, though, what I'm trying to say, and I tried to say it last week, is we don't have enough money in there for our employees in next year's budget. I just don't think we do. And so I still think we've got an issue of looking at, is there some way of doing more for employees than giving them a mid-year COLA of 2%? That $400,000 just isn't enough. And maybe what you're suggesting, from the council and some of your comments, is waiting six months into the year, we get the December triennial, then we have some kind of full-blown discussion of compensation at that point, because you've got at least one major unknown more...
Understood.
More understood, or more in focus.
Or clarity.
Those numbers were full-year numbers, were they not?
Correct.
What we gave on the handout today was a full-year COLA. You could afford a 2% COLA for 12 months using that $400,000. There wouldn't be any money for step increases, then.
Or positions.
Or positions. Now, we can, you know, it's a $37 million budget. As we get into the year, there's always changes that occur, good and bad. That's part of the uncertainty, too, that we're facing. But I guess I just need to say it again, what I tried to say last week, and we don't have to resolve this tonight, but to me, unlike the prior years where we really towed the line on expenditures in order to avoid tax increases, I think we need to look at doing more for employees in the coming fiscal year. Whether it's now, or if we need to get that triennial assessment information in late December, I just think we need to do that.
I would just say, I agree, one. Two, the flipside, two would, though. And I agree with that, and I think we need more. I think we also need to be told, because there's a double-edged sword here that I think always has to be remembered. There's the sword that our employees have not gotten any increases. But on the other edge of that sword is the amount of money that the city taxpayers have paid in addition for the benefits. I mean, it just can't be that we act like our taxpayers have not incurred any expenses over the last three years for employee wages and benefits than they did three years ago. And I don't know what that figure is, but we all...
12 and a half percent or something like that.
When I say we all need to understand what, during that timeframe, the city has paid in addition, over and beyond what we were paying three years ago in benefits.
Well, and what you're saying is, and you're correct, to be clear, we've absorbed the cost of health insurance for our employees...
Right.
...over the past four years.
And we need to talk about how much that is, how much we have absorbed. Because to act like, to just act like our employees don't receive a benefit, when their benefit expenses go up and we do not go to them and say, "You have to contribute more to these benefits," as they increase, is not accurate. Having said that, I reiterate what I said at the very beginning. I agree with you, Bruce.
And I wasn't trying to say...
I absolutely agree with you that we need to do more, in my opinion, than is in this current budget. But I think we all have to understand what we're doing, and what it means as a total package. The employees need to understand that, too, and they have. They've been, I mean, the, my opinion is, the best labor-management relations we have had with our employees in the 20 years I've been here almost have been during our worst economic times. When things have been at our worst, our employees have come to the table and said, "We're not blind, and we're not deaf." And we see what's going on, and we're here to understand and help. And that's why I agree with you, that at some stage of the game, you've got to say, "We recognize that, we appreciate that, and we need to make up for it," and I think we do. But I also think all of us need to know what the additional expenses we as a city have incurred. I don't know what that figure is.
We can provide that, and we did talk more about that back on January 29th at your retreat. Unlike some employers, we didn't cut our health insurance programs or benefits for employees. We didn't cut pensions, and the city should take credit for that...
Right.
...because there were a lot of employers that looked at pensions and health insurance. So, our employees maintain the same benefits there.
But that's one of those things, like, just like we don't see the 12 and a half cents from the county, you know, perhaps a lot of employees don't see, you know, they see their paycheck's not getting any bigger, but they also don't see, you know, an increased deduction every paycheck for the difference in the price of the health insurance.
Because we all just need to be collectively working on it, but you're right, you're going to need an answer from this council about either we're not going to do anything more, we're going to raise some additional revenue, or we're going to cut expenses. I mean, those are the three choices.
Where we're at, just as a ballpark, like I said, we're at a 2% COLA. We could fund it, and we'd find another way to fund this, if we decided to fund those positions, if we wanted to go into a full-year thing. So, we need to think for our next work session...
Right.
...how much farther, and whether you want to take it out of expenditures, again, I don't think this is the year to go for taxes as a way to do it, because there's so many other things in the works.
I'm interested in... I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's just the benchmark, where we'd be at if we took the amount that was set aside in the budget.
I'm interested in hearing more about Kristen's proposal, about a half, what did you say, a half a step a year for six years, or something like that? What did you say, Kristen?
That would be programmed in as part of reincorporating the step process that exists now. The dollar just isn't there to eat all of that in any one chunk. But there is the opportunity, over a longer period, to get back to even, so to speak.
Or, for an example, in the Montgomery County Teachers Union, of which I belong, we are receiving our first step increase in four years next week. You know, so they have arranged to get step increases at various intervals over the term of the next contract, that allow people to get back on track, so to speak, with step increases. But it does, it's over a period of time.
And it only affects half our employees.
Step.
Well, and does it help, Michelle, at the bottom of your page, where you did your cost of one step? Councilmembers, what you're saying, just in ballpark figures, if you took a half of a step, is that what you're saying, a half a step every two years?
In addition to the regular steps?
There you go.
So, it'd be one and a half steps?
There you go.
So, one and a half step, okay? Because...
So, you're talking 700...
That's correct.
750,000.
That's the figure, but then I put that into perspective of that COLA, because, again, the dollar's only so big, so you can't take it in just the step alone, you've got to look at it as applies to the step, and trying to get back to even, as well as that COLA application and the other benefits. And if you can't, you know what I mean, if you can't put those together in one piece...
And you can't look at it as an annual cost, you have to look at it, once it's in there, it's in your base.
As a compounding cost.
And so, it's compounded.
Which is why, which is why I pointed out earlier, that it ties into those other things that you do within the budget that could offset them, especially on the general fund side, because I think that that's the bigger, more difficult area, is if you're going to reduce your capital programs, then you reduce those out, your costs, which reduces the amount going to it from the general fund, just as if you were an institute. As I brought up some time ago, the utility tax rate, you know, if that can generate $100,000, that offsets that amount. So, I think you're going to have to take these pieces and figure out how they can be plugged in, and changes can be made, because then that offset occurs, and then that allows you to discuss how you're going to apply it to make up for these things, because I had, even in my rudimentary approach, I had a hit of at least a half a million dollars that you're going to have to take from, you know, from the employee part of it, you know, in terms of, you may find savings, and you may find new revenue, but you're going to have to subtract out that at least half a million dollars for that hit. And that's why I say, at the end of the day, it leaves you, you know, without knowing anything about how next year goes, just out of the gate, it leaves you several pennies short right away. So, that's, you know, that's the part that I recognize, that you struggle with, and then I think it brings in that question, is it going to be 8%? Is it going to be 12%? Because, you know, every percent there, you know, has an additional fraction of a cent difference.
Well, thank you, Kristen, because that's what I started out with. I don't know what our assessable base is, and what we can do year after year after year during the next fiscal year. Right now, I think I'm hesitant to make any long-term, any of those long-term commitments without putting in perspective of what revenues we have to raise.
All right. Any other comments, questions, before we move on from the budget for today?
We'll schedule a work session next Tuesday afternoon.
Thank you, Michelle, Team Michelle.
You're welcome.
Thank you. City administrators' comments?
None for me this evening.
Go to council comments. Who would like to start? Mr. Monson, thank you.
None for me.
Oh, very good, thank you. Who would like to go next?
I have none tonight, I don't think, either.
All right.
Thank you.
Marty?
No comments tonight, thanks.
Penny?
No, I don't have any.
Kristen?
Again, I'd like to thank the budget and finance staff for providing a good bit of information, and, you know, in being able to get through the entire document, you know, there are tons of people out there that have tons of opinions about what we should do, and most of the time, those opinions are, "How does it directly impact them?" And, you know, as I've said in the past, and I'll say it here again, you know, I'd be more than happy to sit down with anybody to see the difficulties that exist within this, because the reality is, over one of the worst economic climates, what has occurred is expenses have been deferred, borrowing has increased, tax rate was drastically decreased, almost two and a half million dollars, and without some measurable turnaround, that is not a sustainable position to be in. And so, while we may not have to address it within the next two weeks for this budget, I would continue to urge us to seriously engage it within the first six months of the coming fiscal year.
Thanks. My comments, you know, it's been a busy week. Last Wednesday, I was at Morgansville Elementary School, they had their exhibition of learning, and it was very nice to see, again, all the hard work that's going on in the community. On Friday, I had the pleasure of having a walk-on role with the Barbara Ingram School's production of Legally Blonde, and it's very exciting, and the energy backstage was just palpable, and it was a great production. I want to thank them for letting me participate in that. Last night, I was at the Elks, the Women of the Elks had their celebration of citizenship. They awarded 18 high school students citizenship awards, and it's a shame the local news media couldn't cover such a great story like that, because there are so many good things going on in the community, and those kids definitely deserve the recognition. And it's just like I said, you know, colleges, I work with high school kids every day, they're looking, yes, for good grades and good test scores, but what they really want are good citizens. So, I hope that they continue that work. And that's it for... Oh, and of course, I want to just remind everybody to come ride with the mayor on Saturday. We're starting at 9 o'clock at Fairgrounds Park for a nice bike ride. Hopefully, we'll have some dry weather. And with that, unless there are any other comments, we'll adjourn the meeting. And actually, I need, I guess, a motion to go into executive session to discuss... Thank you, Mr. Monson. Any discussion? Purpose is to discuss acquisition of real property for a public person, purpose, and matters directly related thereto. All in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll take a short break.